Next call is regular council meeting of the 22nd to order. We have five public hearings today and I have an opening statement that I'm going to read for the first public hearing. The opening statement is going to apply for every public hearing. Before I start reading this statement, councillor?
Yeah, for sure. I'll look at our conflict for all vacation related items in the vacation rental industry. Let's see, 40 minutes.
I'm going to put a coffee shop over there. This public hearing is being convened pursuant to section 464 of the Local Government Act. At this public hearing, the public will be allowed to make representations to council. And all persons present who believe their interests are affected by the proposed bylaw shall be given the opportunity to address council or to present written submissions respecting matters contained in the proposed bylaw. Those of you who wish to speak concerning this proposed bylaw should commence your address to council by clearly stating your name and address, then you may give us the benefit of your views concerning the proposed bylaw. Please observe the rules. If you have any concerns with the manner in which the hearing is conducted, direct your comments to the chair. Members of the council may, if they wish, ask questions of you following your presentation. However, the main focus of council members today is to listen to the views of the public. It is not the function of council at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaw with individual citizens. Everyone shall be given a reasonable opportunity to be heard at this meeting. No one will be or should feel discouraged or prevented from making his or her views heard. In considering the proposed bylaw, council has received documents which may influence its decision. These documents are available for review and a binder located at the sign table. Before we begin, may I have the corporate officer confirm that all due process was followed according to the Local Government Act?
Yes, Your Worship, for the first public hearing, 1815 Hay Road, I have no further comments.
We have set up a speaker's list at the side table for anybody that wishes to speak on any of the, uh, any of the public hearings today. I'll be going through those, but I will also be going out to the public a minimum of three times, asking for any comments or concerns from the public on any of the proposed bylaws of public hearing. So the first one that we're dealing with is zoning amendment by law 2140, it's a vacation rental on 1815 Hay Road. And Mr. Strachan, you have a brief presentation?
Very briefly, Your Worship, as noted, the subject property is on 1815 Hay Road. Vacation rental is for a whole home for pleasure and vacation. Thank you, Your Worship.
Okay. I have a speaker's list set up. No one has put their name on the list that they wish to speak, so I will go right out to the public for any comments on zoning amendment by law number 2140, and this is for 1815 Hay Road. Is there anyone for the public who would wish to speak to this? Going out to the public for a second time on zoning amendment by law number 2140, this is 1815 Hay Road. Any comments from the public a second time? Any comments or questions from council? Back to the public for a third and final time on zoning amendment by law number 2140, this is 1815 Hay Road, looking for comments for a third and final time. Hearing that, I ask for a motion to close this public hearing. Councillor English, councillor Lando, all those in favor, motion is carried. And there's other motions there, if anybody's inclined to make theirs. I do not make motions. Councillor Brothers?
The zoning amendment by law 2140 be read a third time.
We have a motion by councillor Brothers, seconded by councillor English. Discussion on the motion, councillor Nixon.
Your Worship, I'll be voting against this vacation home. Uh, this is the bottleneck road that goes into Upper Earl Heights with 80 houses on the other side of that, um, bottleneck. And I just think that because this house is on the corner and there have been real problems with this house two years ago with parking, and it's clogged up the whole street with parking, that for their fire and safety reasons, I just cannot vote yes to this standalone vacation home.
Any more discussion on this motion? I guess I have my question to that. This, all this parking, it looks to me like there is space, or there are saying five cars. Mr. Strachan, was this parking always there and available?
Your Worship, I believe there's an additional stall, they've installed on one side of the property. I'm not sure if that was existing or not. There's a fifth stall that shows up on the jar, that's just showing simply being available. If you look at the photo of the property, it doesn't show it's existing.
We have a motion to approve in third reading. This is councillor Brothers.
Just a question maybe to Mr. Strachan, have there been concerns or questions about this particular property complaints previously?
Your Worship, I don't have any record of receiving any complaints for this particular property, nor have I received, we received no submissions in the purpose of letters that were sent. The adjacent property, which I've asked twice to hear.
Motion's on the floor. Any more comments from council? All those in favor? Against? Motion is carried, councillor Nixon voted against. There is one other, uh, motion there, if somebody's inclined to make it. Councillor Brothers?
The zoning amendment by law 2140 be adopted?
Motion by councillor Brothers, seconded by councillor English. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Against? Motion is carried. Moving into our next, uh, public hearing, this has to do with zoning amendment by law number 2141, vacation rental at 507th Street East. And again, could I have the corporate officer confirm that all due process was followed according to the Local Government Act?
Yes, Your Worship, I have a total of 14 submissions for this vacation rental application for 507th Street East. I have 12 submissions from the public that were opposed. I have one submission from the property owner and one submission from a neighbor who is in favor. I also have received a petition today from people in the area with 21 signatures in
Mr. Strachan, you have a presentation for us?
Very briefly, Your Worship, just for clarity, the subject property for this public hearing is for 507th Street East. The subject vacation rental application is for a two-bedroom home. Thank you, Your Worship.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, and just to reiterate once more that there was a speaker's list set up and a lot of people have signed it, only one person has indicated that they wish to speak, and that is the opponent or the applicant. Again, I will be going out to the public a minimum of three times if anyone from the public wishes to speak at this public hearing. So, um, again, we're talking about zoning amendment by law 2141, vacation rental at 507th Street East, and, uh, Mr. Gerard has indicated that he wishes to speak, he is the applicant.
Thank you, Your Worship, uh, we'll be...
Would you mind coming onto the podium?
Uh, we're going to withdraw the application, thank you.
Uh, I'm sure that everybody understands what's happening here, the applicant has decided to withdraw his, uh, application, and, um, should we be putting motion, turning it down? Or just...
Yeah, I think after the closing of the public hearing, to tidy things up, you should either rescind the first two readings or repeat this one a third.
Should I still be asking for the public comments for three times since we're in a public hearing? Hmm? Okay. Uh, looking for a motion to close the public hearing. Councillor Nixon, councillor English, all those in favor? Motion is carried. And we should rescind the first two readings, probably the easiest.
Motion to rescind the first two readings?
Motion by councillor Nixon, seconded by councillor Brothers. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Motion is carried, thank you.
I'll recuse myself for the next one, Your Worship, I'm supposed to...
So anybody that was here for that 7th Street application, if you'd like to leave, you can just go through the back door.
And just before everybody walks out, I would like to thank Mr. Gerard for pulling his application. I think that he looked at the comments from the neighborhood and reacted accordingly. And I think that he deserves a little applause as well. Thank you. I'll just hold on for just a couple of minutes before we start the next public hearing.
Oh.
Uh, boy.
We should go.
We should go.
Wait a second.
No, I'll see the usual stuff.
I guess I have a little...
Somebody asked if it's a party hearing?
Yeah.
I'll ask them.
Those letters in my position, I don't understand.
A lot of trouble.
What's that?
This is my group.
Are you research?
Yeah.
No, these are all vacation rentals.
Yeah.
Okay, we, uh, next public hearing is zoning amendment by law 2143, vacation rental at 1739 Pietrowski Road. And, uh, again, the, uh, opening statement would apply, and I again go back to the corporate officer to confirm that all due process was followed according to the Local Government Act.
Yes, Your Worship, 1739 Pietrowski Road, we have received no public submissions.
I did say. And, uh, Mr. Strachan, you have a brief presentation for us?
Very briefly, Your Worship, just for clarity, 1739 Pietrowski Road, subject application is for a vacation rental for a two-bedroom home. Thank you, Your Worship.
And again, we have a speaker's list set up, and, uh, the applicant is here and may wish to speak. Again, uh, just to remind you that I will be going back out to the public a minimum of three times for any comments from the public. Uh, so, going out to the public, Mr. Palmer, do you wish to speak?
Only if required. If there's any opposition.
You can jump up and join the conversation anytime that you would like.
Okay.
Is there any comments from the public for the first time on zoning amendment by law number 2143, which is 1739 Pietrowski Road? Looking for comments from the public? Looking for any comments from the public for a second time on the 1739 Pietrowski Road? Any comments from council? Questions? Going back to the public for the third and final time for any comments on zoning amendment by law 2143, which is 1739 Pietrowski Road? Looking for a motion to close this public hearing. Councillor English, councillor Lando, all those in favor? Motion is carried.
Your Worship, I'll read that zoning amendment by law number 2143 be read a third time.
Motion by councillor Nixon, seconded by councillor English. Discussion, councillor Nixon.
Uh, Your Worship, I'm going to be supporting this one. This is a smaller two-bedroom home with, on a big lot, and it's on the road where there's access to people's property. If there was a parking problem, you know, parking problems usually happen at night when there's nobody around to deal with them, but because it's on a looped road, I'm going to support it.
Any other comments or questions on this motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Next motion?
Your Worship, that zoning amendment by law number 2143 be adopted.
Motion by councillor Nixon, seconded by councillor English. Discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. So we're going into, uh, our fourth public hearing, which is zoning amendment by law number 2145, vacation rental 902 8th Street East. And again, the opening statement would, uh, would apply, and I'm going to again ask the corporate officer to confirm that all due process was followed according to the Local Government Act.
Yes, Your Worship, 902 8th Street East, I did not receive any public submissions.
Thank you. Mr. Strachan, you have a presentation for us?
Very briefly, Your Worship, as noted, 902 8th Street East, the subject application is for a secondary suite above a garage for future construction. So it would be two units, remaining of the building, one would be the secondary suite, and I think we would need the house. Thank you, Your Worship.
And again, we had a speaker's list, uh, thrown up, and no one has indicated that they wish to speak, so I'll go straight out to the public, looking for any comments from the public a first time on zoning amendment by law 2145, which is 902 8th Street East. Any comments from the public for the first time?
I, I'm, I'm the property owner, so I can speak if necessary, but I...
That's, that's up to you, ma'am. You're welcome to come to the podium and speak, or you can wait to see if there's any comments and you can speak to that.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll wait, just letting everyone know.
Looking for any comments from the public a second time on zoning amendment by law 2145, which is 902 8th Street East, for a second time. Any comments or questions from council? And back to the public for a third and final time, looking for any comments on 902 8th Street East vacation rental. Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion to close this public hearing. Councillor English, councillor Lando, all those in favor? Motion is carried. And we have other motions, if anybody's inclined.
I'd be happy to bring that forward, Your Worship, that zoning amendment by law 2145 be read a third time.
Motion by councillor English, seconded by somebody? Councillor Lando? Councillor Nixon?
Uh, Your Worship, just a question for staff. Um, this is a vacation rental that is asking for a suite that's to be built. And according to our bylaws that sits right now, that business license could be changed and then turn that house into a vacation home. Treating it the same as, um, I'm asking staff to come back with that bylaw change to have a category with just, um, suites, which are asked for in this case. Um, I'm just looking for some guidance here.
Uh, will staff are jumping in? I'll go to, uh, okay.
Question, a little question is, is, does the bylaw allow for the secondary suite and/or the house to be a vacation rental? Yes, with the change in business license, they could move the vacation rental from the secondary suite into the main part of the house. It can only be one or the other, it's not required to, or not allowed to be both. So it could be either in the single-family dwelling component or in the secondary suite. This kicking our application, the home is quite small, so it's going to be relatively close in size, um, to each other. I believe the home has to be square feet. They're limited to the size of the secondary suite to 40% of the single-family dwellings area. That's a building code limitation, as well as a bylaw limitation.
Okay, everybody seems to be satisfied, because I've covered what the intent is. Councillor Brothers, you have any other comments here? No? Question is, uh, on the table, to approve in third reading. Any other comments or questions from council? All those in favor? Motion is carried.
I'll continue, Your Worship, with, uh, that zoning amendment by law 2145 be adopted.
Motion by councillor English, seconded by councillor Nixon. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you.
I'll recuse myself for the next one, Your Worship, I'm just going to start my
Uh, moving into our last, uh, public hearing, this is zoning amendment by law 2146, which is 1475 Birch Drive. And again, my opening statement, conducting the public hearing is, is still in order. And again, I'm going to ask the corporate officer to confirm that all due process was followed according to the Local Government Act.
Yes, Your Worship, 1475 Birch Drive, I received two submissions, neighboring properties in opposition, and two submissions from the applicant answering questions and explaining their point of view.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Strachan, you have a presentation?
Very briefly, Your Worship, as noted, the subject property is 1475 Birch Drive. Subject application is for a vacant parcel, uh, so it's allocated to four-bedroom units for the cap. However, the applicant has indicated the intent to build a one-bedroom secondary suite as a vacation. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Strachan. Again, we did have a, uh, a speaker's list set up, and, uh, both of the applicants are here, and both have indicated that they wish to speak. I have no one else on the speaker's list, but again, just to remind everyone that I will be going out to the public for a minimum of three times for any comments on this zoning amendment by law 2146, which is 1475 Birch Drive. And, uh, the first applicant that has indicated that he wished to speak is Sarah Vincent.
Oh, hi, will maybe both come up to the podium here?
Absolutely. Just state your names and your address, please.
Okay. So, my name is Brandon McKenzie, my current address is 1519 W Street, and Sarah has the same address. Our application is for 1475 Birch. As you can see, it's a largely undeveloped neighborhood at this point in time. Our plan, as stated in our letters of intent, is to have an in-law suite that would potentially double as a legally zoned vacation rental, going 120 days per year. The main concern, uh, concerns that have been expressed, um, that being said, there was just the two neighbors, um, that had the concerns, and the majority of the neighbors were supportive and share similar viewpoints. But I would like the opportunity to, I'm not sure it's necessary to quote, but, um, the two neighbors that did concern, or had concerns, they're unfortunately out of the country. One, um, says is in near-mar vacationing, the other semi-absent two landowners in there in Australia. But their main point of contention, which we, of course, saw being an issue, is that with the current zoning, um, structure, there is potential for this, this lot, in theory, to become an entire house rental, um, which is not our intent, never has been, but as it stands in city zoning bylaws, that is the case, and as noted in the December, or sorry, November 8th meeting, there's a similar issue with Melnick Drive. And the, we would like to opt for, um, council to explore that as an option, a subzoning, which, um, to us is certainly acceptable, and as landowners and being invested in that particular neighborhood, um, we also do not want to have entire houses as vacation rentals. And it's important to note, there is already an existing houses zone for vacation rentals, um, but under the neighborhood-specific covenant, it, uh, in theory could be regulated, uh, under the provincial property laws. So as far as the city, um, sees it, this is eligible to be rezoned, and it could be, but inherently there will likely be conflict amongst the neighborhood with decisions or the debate whether to uphold the covenant, um, to mitigate this type of behavior, so...
But we should see that.
In both cases, the, uh, the opposition, there was also encouragement, um, and one of these letters was just submitted yesterday by, uh, John, um, who's directly across the street, and I'll quote, "I encourage council to find a way to allow these one-suite type of vacation rentals without opening the door to future owners running the entire properties as vacation rental." And this is a similar view that was shared by Tom and Jamie McDonald, who are adjacent to corner neighbors. So where council takes from here, I'm not sure if that's, uh, if that's been developed yet, but that would be an option that we're willing to explore and would be comfortable with, and the, the, the neighbors with opposing views have clearly stated, John, or Tom also participated in the July form about the vacation rental process, and he stated as well there that this is something that he sees as an option also for young families to use as an income stream. I myself am a pheol just and a ski guide, so it would be an opportunity down the road to host, um, visitors or guests, uh, to gravelstoke and offer some sort of, uh, package, combination. Sarah's a teacher at the, the high school, so it's just an opportunity for us to have a in-law suite, um, for our extended family to stay in and visit, um, meanwhile being semi-subsidized by, um, potentially, uh, short-term rental.
Any other comments?
No, he, I just wanted to point out that both letters that were submitted in opposition, um, are okay with a one-bedroom suite, only they just want that as a guarantee because they're worried that we might sell that out. That's what I was already saying, so...
Okay. Well, we'll, uh, get through the public hearing process and we'll see how we do, which part we're in right now, so...
Do I have to speak yet?
Uh, I can ask for any other comments from the public? If somebody comes and, and speaks, and you would like to come up and answer or add additional information, you're more than welcome to come back up to the table. I will be still calling out three times to the public, and you're welcome to come back up and speak if you wish.
Brandon McKenzie, may I just add one more thing?
Absolutely.
There was a concern with parking, uh, we did address that in a rebuttal, or, um, email to the inter-neighbors about our plans for parking. Um, as the covenant listed, you're permitted to have screened off parking. In our case, with the one-bedroom suite, we only need one parking lot, so we're fully comfortable, and you can see with the shape of the lot and the space that we would be able to abide by, uh, for that, with that request.
All right, thank you. Is there any comments on zoning amendment by law 2146, and this is 1475 Birch Drive? Looking for any comments from the public for discernment?
Hi, my name's Simon Davis, I'm the owner...
Simon, would you mind coming to the podium?
Sure.
And just state your name and address, please.
My name's Simon Davis, and I'm the owner of 1535 Birch Drive, and I just want to say that I'm for the two people that are part of the fiscal partners.
Okay, thank you. Going back out to the public for a second time, are there any comments on zoning amendment by law 2146? This is 1475 Birch Drive. Any comments or questions from council? Councillor Lando?
Your Worship, I have a very important question for staff that's arisen since, uh, the start of this meeting, um, and I think it's maybe, uh, appropriate to get up to speed on this question. Regarding the, uh, previous application, as I mentioned, the business license applied to part of the whole, so it's a partial whole application, do, um, individuals who are filed on an air lot, for example, have an opportunity to, um, formally say that it's only going to be for part of the suite during the air lot application, or are they limited under our bylaw to apply for the whole lot?
Worship, the, the rezoning process is for the land, not specifically the house.
Okay.
So what's been proposed, uh, at previous council meetings, was that there would be an establishment of a consideration of two categories. So that would be coming forward to council in January.
Okay.
Um, we're hoping to go through the remaining applications after today, being additional applications, which will take us to the cap. It was established by council.
Okay.
We have nine additional applications beyond that cap, um, so we're hoping to bring forward the issue of two categories, as well as the cap together, uh, once we've gotten through this initial set. And we're hoping to get through the initial set so that we can determine where the remaining applications fall, and address this issue with a vacant lot. Time is our friend, this is going to be a house here constructed between now and January, so whatever happens with the categories would be applied to this property, as they indicated they wish to have a single family, they would be allocated to that category as part of the, uh, report in January.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any comments from council? Questions? Councillor Nixon?
Your Worship, just before we close the public hearing, I'm seeking the kind of clarity that councillor Lando was as well, because it's starting to get a little bit complicated with a lot of moving parts. If we're going to go and amend the zoning by law and create these subcategories... If we're going to go and amend the zoning by law and create these subcategories where there's whole house or suite-only, uh, vacation rental permitted, council will first have to consider and adopt those amendments to the zoning by law overall, and then these applications, and if this one is held in advance, would have to come back at second reading. Council would have to amend it to propose that it be rezoned to the new zoning classification, and then another public hearing would be held. Um, and so while there's no house here, time is our friend. It isn't, it isn't with respect to a particular application, because the communities that have taken acceptance of these things may change and evolve over time. Um, and so that's my concern, is, is the, the length of time that we're going to hold back on a couple of them in consideration of this, this change that council hasn't enforced yet. But, but I think that describes how we would have to proceed, right?
Your worship, as, as noted, several applications have been approved of the process for. So, we're hoping to, to get the remaining applications approved of the process, and while it be a necessity, if council approves two categories to rezone them all, so any of their held in advance will have to be dealt with, separate from the ones that previously have been approved. So, hopefully, we can go back and call them two categories, because we certainly could put it into advance if they wish, um, but we would have to deal with that one independent of the applications that have already been approved.
So, if that's council's desire after the public hearing is closed, then what would we look for? A resolution to, um, hold the zoning amendment application in advance pending council's consideration of the change to create subcategories in vacation rental?
Counselor, certainly could do that if they wish.
Because if we read it a third time, we find ourselves in a, needing to go back and resent third, amend it second, have another public hearing, just trying to see the shortest path.
Um, so that we could put them all together, um, I was hoping we could go the direction of completing either approving or not approving the applications based on the current application and the current structure, and that if council elects to have a stiffer structure in January, if we bring forward the two groups of categories together to go into that new zoning as a whole, instead of having some come through independently and some come through with the group, um, sort of dealing with it all at once through one public hearing.
But that would mean that if, if we decided this, this would go under that other category, then we would be doing another public hearing?
Your worship, if council chooses to, to categories, we go do another public hearing. Um, what I'm hoping is we can do one public hearing of all of the other categories.
Just to create the subzone.
We'd have to do the public hearing to create the subzone, but then, your worship, we'd be rezoning those properties to the subcategory. I'm hoping to do that all at once instead of individually, because we'll be dealing with thirty-five properties. Um, so if we can do the two categories all at once, it would be, uh, maybe a little bit more efficient.
Yeah. Counselor Nixon, then council member.
We're just looking for clarity here. When I'm hearing from staff, if we, as council, after the public hearings close, approve this, then it would go into that second category once that bylaw comes back for amendment.
Your worship, yeah, we're looking at council, hopefully, and it's, it's up to council to make a decision whether they approve or not approve the application, so we know where we are with the caps, we can complete that process, uh, and then we will bring it forward in Jan, within one of the two categories for further consideration.
So, do you see these two categories, one would be up to two and the other would be up to four? Is that kind of what you're, what...
Currently, we're looking at two categories based around the idea of retaining a residential unit within it, so either it has the secondary suite or the main house, that being the category. The second category being a full vacation rental regardless of the number of bedrooms. So, one where somebody's living, and there's a residential component, two that remains, either in the secondary suite or in the main house, and the other category where there isn't somebody else living there.
Okay. Um, just before I go to Councilor Orlando, is, one of the staff are practically writing what this, how this motion is going to sound when, uh, when we come to it in a couple of minutes? Just throw that out there. Counselor Orlando?
Hi, your worship.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to go back out to the public for a third and final time for any comments on this zoning amendment by law two-one-four-six, which is fourteen seventy-five Birch Drive. Comments from the public for last time? Looking for a motion to close the public hearing, Counselor English and Counselor Orlando. All those in favor? Motion is carried.
Your worship, I'll bring forward that zoning amendment by law twenty-one forty-six be read a third time.
Sir?
Yes. Your worship, can I just jump in just before this, because I don't think that's what we're looking at having happen, and council's desire is to have this one come and fall into the subcategory where an owner is resident in the home.
Your worship, if, if they were to do what was done with previous application, was supposed to deny it, and then have them come back, uh, without paying a fee to apply again, we certainly could do that, which is the same process that was followed from the other application. Um, if they were holding in advance, it would be a separate group to come forward. If they made the decision to approve it or deny it at this point, um, it would still need to come forward to council. Uh, but this bylaw would then be completed, and we would come forward with a new bylaw to put it into one of the two categories that council approved.
Okay, if you're fine with that, motion is...
I understand that.
Wait, so you know how you're going to call that unless you're attached to it? Okay. Thanks, worship. So... I know you do. I'm just getting up to run. I have a mover to approve in third reading. Is there a second to for that motion? Counselor Orlando. So, what comments are, are now to council?
Uh, your worship, I'm going to approve this so that it moves along with some assurance to the young couple that are trying to appease their neighborhood, but so that they know they can move ahead with their plans. And I know that staff will bring it back in that second category that we've asked for, and we, as council, will deal with it then.
But just to be clear, I think you should be saying is that we could be voting against it, knowing that staff are going to be bringing it back to the table to put it into the subzone? May I, Ron?
Your worship, at this point, we're asking council to make decisions on these applications based on regulations in place today, whether they wish to deny or approve them. And if the regulations change in January, they'll be reevaluated according to those new regulations.
Well, this new subzone can come fast enough for me, but this is very confusing. So, motion is to approve. It sounds like that's what we're doing. Unless council has comments contrary. Counselor Orlando?
Hi, your worship, I'll support, uh, the zoning amendment by law as read. Um, I've, just to be clear on my thinking, it's a bit separate from the discussion we just had. Um, I do know that there were two who, uh, wrote in opposition, however, the primary argument was regarding, uh, builder's covenant, which we've, uh, encountered a couple of times here at the table, which is not, um, something that's governed by a city, that's up to, uh, the, the builders who would contract with, uh, various, uh, property owners who have bought into the subdivision. Um, and also, I guess, a comment in general, and I agree with what, uh, your worship has said, uh, regarding getting this new, um, two-suite sort of system in place, couldn't come soon enough. However, I do feel that we, uh, we live by the laws that are on the books right now, and I think that, uh, any other decision, uh, about that is premature, because we don't even know what the future system's going to be like, so I will support it, um, as, uh, as it's, uh, written here.
I think I'm voting in favor of this thing, but it's only because it's going to come back to us as a one-suite vacation rental.
Your worship, just to be clear, it may not if council doesn't decide to create these categories. It'll only come back if council makes the decision to create two-category systems. And whatever format council chooses to do that, it will be a vacant recommendation, but council can need to make that decision, or it will not come back to us.
Well, and, and I, and that's fair enough. I understand that part, and I guess what we're in a process with vacation rental is we're, we're starting the process and learning from it and experiencing all the different, uh, anomalies that come with it, and, and I, I applaud this young couple for, uh, doing the, the smaller suite vacation rental. They have a purpose for that, and, and I think that that's exactly the way this thing should evolve. What we're having to do now is evolve our process to match up with, uh, this kind of demand, and so I, I think that we're all saying the same thing, even though it looks pretty darn confusing sometimes, but, uh, but we started the process to learn from it and adjust, and that's exactly what, uh, we're, we're, we're doing, and I still understand that council is going to have to approve and move forward on the, on the two zones of vacation rental, and, uh, and I feel pretty confident that that, that will happen, and, uh, and everybody's going to get slotted into where they, they want to be and where the neighborhood wants them to be. So, I think that this is a good solution, and it, it meets the, the, uh, concerns that some of the neighborhood have. So, I think we're going to call the question, unless anybody else has a comment. Motion's on the floor, all those in favor? Motion is carried.
Your worship, I'll bring forward that zoning amendment by law twenty-one forty-six be adopted.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Um, can, don't I, can you let our counselor in? We're also in a home town, this is a little short. See? You got some... Yeah. You got some... You gotta read the minutes. Okay, moving into our, the rest of our agenda, um, a couple of announcements that I'd like to make. One is just to remind everybody that, uh, Moonlight Madness is coming on Friday, so make sure that your visa cards are paid off and go and enjoy shopping in the community. I'd also like to offer congratulations to, uh, Rose River Resort, that was just voted the best ski resort in Canada by the World Ski Awards, and, uh, our now famous, uh, thank you. And our now famous, uh, Big Horn Lodge has just won fourth year of all best ski lodge in the world. Uh, getting a little closer to council chambers, we have the small business VC nominees, we have, uh, Tree Construction is up for a nomination for, uh, this small business award, as well as the Mount Colab, so congratulations to everybody.
Thank you.
Uh, looking for a motion to adopt the agenda. Counselor Nixon, Counselor Orlando, all in favor? Motion is carried. And the need a motion to adopt the minutes of the regular council meeting on November the eighth. Counselor English and Counselor Duke, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Uh, business arising from the minutes, I'm, uh, would like...
I gotta go again. I got my initials there.
Oh, I didn't have your initial on one spot here, sorry.
Okay. I'll be back in two.
I should make it a vote for. I have another one there, yeah. Uh, I would like to exercise my authority under the community charter to, uh, ask council to reconsider, vote again on third reading for the, uh, zoning amendment by law two-one-three-one to vacation rental at seventeen eighty Millisloe Road. I think that there was, uh, information that was, uh, brought to the table that I don't think was a hundred percent relevant, and I'm asking council to reconsider that motion, and, uh, there is a motion, uh, there that somebody would be willing to make. Counselor Nixon?
Your worship, I'll bring forward that third reading be deferred.
I think you could do both of that.
And that a second public hearing date be set for Tuesday, December twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, in council chamber.
Motion by Counselor, uh, Nixon and seconded by Counselor English. Discussion on the motion. I guess I should probably make a couple of comments, uh, and, uh, one of the things, uh, there was a couple of things that we were trying to do by, by opening up the, uh, can of worms called vacation rental, and that is to, one is to make vacation rentals legal, make sure that, uh, uh, life and safety issues are, are looked after, that they are, are safe for people to, to live in, make sure that the, uh, the neighborhood knows exactly what is going on in their neighborhood and having an opportunity to, to make a say in that. And the other one is that, that there's a few people that, that are operating vacation rentals that, uh, with a little encouragement through, from the process, would be encouraged not to run vacation rentals, and that was one of the reasons why we set a cap, and the cap is based on a percentage of hotel rooms in the community. So, what has actually been happening that, uh, is that some of these vacation rentals that are getting out of the business are actually reverting into or back to long-term rental accommodation. And, um, when this came forward at, at the last public hearing, I think there was a little bit of, uh, inference that, that vacation rentals are taking away from, uh, long-term rental or affordable rental, and actually, more of the opposite is happening in reality, and, uh, which was part of the, of the original plan. So, I'm just concerned that, that council has made a decision based on information that may not be one-hundred percent accurate, and that's why I've asked for it to come back. So, I'm not sure if that has raised any comments or questions from council before. Counselor Orlando?
Uh, your worship, I do appreciate your comment. Uh, one, uh, my thought on bringing this individual application back is that, in my thinking on, uh, every individual, uh, vacation rental application that we place upon us, uh, that comes before us, I'm putting a lot of weight on what the public comment is on these, and I'd like to just be assured that, uh, any applicant realizes that, that, um, writing a letter for the public hearing or, or, and/or in addition to coming to the public here is advisable, at least in my case, because I'm going to be listening to what the public says. And, uh, as we've seen many times, the comments can come in the day before, uh, just because, you know, and there's all of a sudden, somebody comes in, ten letters, and drops them off at the city hall, so it's important that, uh, everyone come in and, uh, give their side of the story, so to stay on their application.
And I think, uh, the earlier public hearings today are a prime example of that. One is, uh, where the neighborhood, uh, was not, uh, happy or receptive, and the applicant has decided to withdraw his application, and I think that that's good. The other is that, uh, we're, we're now looking at creating this, this subzone to bring in smaller suites. That's acceptable to the comments of the other public hearing that we had. So, uh, I think that it, the, the process is proving to work, and, uh, and I'll be glad to get through a hundred more public hearings before we're done on this thing. I'm just kidding on that part. Anyways, we have a motion on the floor to bring this back and reschedule another public hearing. Is there any more comments from council? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you for, uh, supporting that.
King, your worship, I'll accuse myself of the next one on the basis of subsequent prior relationship.
Okay. We're into item eight A, which is old business, and, uh, there is a motion there.
I'll bring forward, your worship, that zoning amendment by law twenty-one thirty-three be adopted.
Motion by Counselor Nixon, seconded by Counselor English. Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Can we let our two counselors back in now? So, we're at, uh, parity revitalization agreement for Mount View School site, and Mr. Strachan, you have a, uh, presentation for us?
Your worship. So, as noted, your worship, we, uh, come back to council with a proposed heritage revitalization agreement for the old Mount View School site. Um, the applicant has proposed to include a number of uses within the property. Uh, what you have before you today is three separate bylaws. Um, they relate to how the heritage revitalization agreement is applied to this area property. So, to how we, uh, regulate and control through this avenue that the local government allows, Book, Book of Government Act allows us to, to use, um, there was a number of components that council approved at their last meeting, uh, which included a number of uses, as well as a, a site plan... a number of uses, as well as a site plan, which included 15 vehicle parking spaces, some bicycle parking, some other components. There was some additional requests that were made.